Good evening. I'd like to convene this special business meeting of the Board of Education April 19th, 2022. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Treasurer's Report for February 2022 is available in the Business Office. I'd like to open it up for public comment on any of the listed agenda items.
Nobody wants to make any speeches?
So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Luft for the recognition of our retirees.
All right. Well, welcome, everyone. I've got to say how exciting it is to look out to the crowd and seeing so many faces. We don't typically get this turnout for board meetings. I'm sure that surprises many of you. And I'm also sure, once this part's over, you will all be gone. Tonight marks a very special occasion for us and one that we've unfortunately not been able to really celebrate in its full capacity over the last couple of years because of COVID. So it was wonderful to provide the opportunity to get the families together and have some refreshments and really have a chance to celebrate with each other, our retirees and some of our tenured candidates coming up. So without any further ado, I will call up. Anybody want to volunteer to go first? In that case, I will invite up Dr. Seppi. Thank you. And Mr. Mello.
So it's our honor, Mr. Mello and myself, to be able to talk about Mrs. Cobb tonight. We're so happy her family is here with her to celebrate her retirement. And I'll tell you, my first encounter with Karen Cobb was when I walked into the building for an interview seven years ago. All I remember is this lady yelling at me to get out of the hallway. It was Karen. I knew then that if I got the job, I could always count on Karen to keep the high school under control. I learned shortly after that Karen is a Putnam Valley original. In fact, I recall her telling me about when they installed the first traffic light in PV. And now there are three. She can't believe it. She began her work in the district before the high school was built and held many jobs in the middle school, working with Mr. Halasy. She came to the high school in 2007 as a campus monitor and became a pro at catching kids in the bathroom, hanging out, or kids leaving through the wrong exit. She is a stickler for fairness and order, which I really appreciate. She may have a rough outer exterior, I know you didn't know that about her, but on the inside, she's a deeply caring surrogate mother to hundreds of students at the high school. She cares about these students as if they were her own. She has a great way with them where she can tease and playfully banter with them, but the students know that she means business. As a result, Karen's contribution to creating a respectful environment will be greatly missed. The high school will not be the same without Karen walking the halls, chaperoning volleyball and basketball games, and little do they know that she's one of their students' best supporters. Even if she tries to keep it hidden, the secret's out. One of the students told me today, "Ms. Cobb loves us." We are all going to miss Karen a great deal, but she promised she would come back to SUB on occasion. We wish her all the best in her retirement with her wonderful children and grandchildren, which are the heart and soul, and Larry, her supportive husband. Speaking of Larry, he thought managing PV Roads was rough? Good luck with Karen in retirement. Mr. Mello and I sat today and made a few tips to help you, because she might have difficulty transitioning from being home, you know, from campus monitor. So Larry, make sure you bring her Dunkin' Donuts coffee daily.
That's an iced coffee cream.
Don't forget to sign in and out of the bathroom, Larry, or she's going to bust Never leave the house without permission, right? And don't ever leave through the back door, because she has cameras and she's always watching. Don't think about sneaking food when it's not dinnertime, where she's going to send you back to the living room. And always follow her rules, or she's going to give you the business. And that should keep you in a good fitting with her while she adjusts to her new life. All jokes aside, we want to congratulate you, Karen, on your retirement. Your PVHS family thanks you for your dedication and years of service to the children of Putnam Valley High School. Thank you. So the person I'm going to talk about next was a semi-pro football player, basketball coach, softball umpire, and I'm told also beat Mark Space in a cycling race. She also happens to be the premier APIB calculus teacher at the high school for the past 20 years. In fact, she's been the only APIB calculus teacher for the past 20 years. Kelly Thompson is known for her incredible work ethic, her devotion to students, and her unwavering support of her colleagues. We will miss her brilliance in the math classroom, but even more importantly, we will miss her incredible peanut butter pie that she makes for everybody's birthdays and her Christmas tree deliveries for staff. She has been the quintessential liaison for our Duchess Community College program as well, and she's been a strong advocate for giving all students access to these college-level courses and preparing our students for a strong foundation in math for college. She also has been a great sport, building good relationships with students, and this year she even took a pie in the face to support a ninth-grade fundraiser. Maybe more than one. Kelly, they broke the mold when you were born. You're an honest, forthright, and incredibly hard-working person, and unfortunately, you're also a trendsetter. Thanks to you, there's a new tradition at the high school where teachers get to paint their parking spaces in retirement. Kelly, all year has been known for, "Is it better to tell you or just wait to see what you say?" Your spot has been envied by all, and Matt Mello can't wait to paint yours over with a Giants 1991 logo, the Bills' greatest rival. We know your husband, Rich, is looking forward to having you home every day, but Rich, as you know, calculus teachers are used to repeating themselves over and over. So if Kelly gives you a task, you better do it right the first time, or you will be in lunch to redo it. And if she starts mumbling about derivatives, functions, and slopes because she hasn't quite acclimated to being home, just give her a tennis racket and send her out to the courts for recovery. Kelly, the student, staff, and administration are sad to see you go, but the infamous 1967 club promises that we're going to take a trip down to Florida for the Army-Navy game in December. We wish you all the best in your new beautiful home, your new life, and we thank you for your 20 years of devoted service to the students of Putnam Valley.
My name is Travis McCarty. I'm the principal of Putnam Valley Middle School. I'd like to recognize three retirees this evening who have dedicated many years of service to not only Putnam Valley Middle School, but to the district as a whole. So the first person I'd like to congratulate is Ms. Karen Geyer. Karen had the privilege, go ahead, we can clap, Karen. So Karen had the privilege to work in Putnam Valley School District since 1996. She first started at the elementary school for seven years as a substitute teacher, and she then moved to the middle school around 2003 and became a full-time teacher's aide at the middle school. And to be honest with all of you, Karen was one of the first staff members that I had the privilege to work with as she was a teacher aide in sixth grade with myself and Mrs. Brothers. So I like to say she kept us under good control, and she was always welcoming, always had a smile on her face, always willing to help support us and our students at every turn. And I think that's something Karen will be remembered most for, is her con demeanor, her welcoming presence, and the way in which she not only treated staff, but her students as well. So I have fond memories of working with Karen, and she's been so grateful and amazing to work with over the years. And I quote her, "It's truly been an honor to work for this district, and I hope that my students remember me as someone whose classroom was safe, caring, and made learning fun. I will never forget the support and friendships I've developed throughout the years at PVCSD. After retirement, I plan on coming back into SUB," thank you, "in between my traveling and enjoying my grandchildren." Karen has been an asset to our district for many years, and in the last year, what I thank her the most for is being able to adapt. Our Learning Commons is a beautiful new space in the middle school. We're still searching for the right library media specialist, and Karen has been such a welcoming presence in that space. She welcomes students in during their lunch or recess periods. The kids are having conversations with her. She's showing them the books around the space and just navigating the space and making it very welcome for those who come in there. And whenever she's either pulled to SUB or pulled for another reason, the kids are wondering, "Where's Mrs. Geyer? We want to go in." And that's just because she's created that space. She's created welcoming posters, just everything that you would want in a space to gravitate toward. And, you know, in her last year to be able to do that is just phenomenal, as well as being in classrooms as well. So in addition to Karen raising her family here, she will forever be known for her caring demeanor and her collaborative relationship with teachers and students and like. I hope you enjoy your time in Delaware, your grandchildren, and thank you for your service to this community, and we look forward to having you sub. So the next person I'd like to recognize is Ms. Linda Pregeado. Thank you, Linda. So Linda isn't here with us this evening, but I feel like Linda has been here every step of the way for myself. And I know that I'm going to say some things of her time here before she went into retirement and then came back out of retirement. I say kind of like Michael Jordan. It's very tough to retire from a profession you truly love, and that's the way I think of Linda. Unofficially, Linda started as a SUB in the Putnam Valley School District from 1983 to 1986. She was given the opportunity to work in the junior high school office as a principal's secretary. Linda worked there for five years and then applied to the superintendent's office to work for Mary Ann Doyle. She worked as a superintendent's secretary and district clerk for 18 years, which included eight superintendents from 1991 to 2009. After that, she retired, and something of which I truly find hard to believe, she relaxed for three years, because if you know Linda, she never stops, and I've never seen her relax. So she relaxed for three years until she became bored and decided to come back and try subbing at PVCSD. After four years of subbing mainly at the middle school, she was given the opportunity to work as a teaching assistant for the last two and a half years. I can truly say Linda has enjoyed every moment of her many years in the Putnam Valley Central School District, but what stands out most was the opportunity she had in working with the students of Putnam Valley Middle School. I quote Linda, "It's truly been an enjoyable experience." She and her husband will be retiring to South Carolina. We will miss Linda, as I can't remember a time working in the district when I haven't worked with her in one capacity or another. She truly cares about our students first and foremost, and she raised her family here as well. Congratulations, Linda. And lastly, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Pat Vandeveld. Pat has a good excuse for not being here this evening. She is retired in Florida. She retired mid-year, and I have a lot to say about Pat Vandeveld. She truly stands out as, number one, a lifelong resident of Putnam Valley. Not only has she and her husband raised their family here, but she was a member of the first class of Putnam Valley Middle School in 1972, and her father was a huge contributor to the community as well. In fact, before she retired, she shared primary documents of the building of Putnam Valley Middle School. One thing that Pat did in her time at the middle school was reinvent herself. Later on in her career, she was one of the originating members of the IDE, learner-active, technology-infused classroom approach. Students had the choice board with non-negotiable items as well as choice activities. It was a new approach where every student received individual attention, and others were pulled for small-group instruction as well as whole-group opportunities. I can't say enough about Pat's impact and leadership on this community and on future generations. She will surely be missed, and in Pat's words, "My husband and I are relocating to Florida. I will miss Putnam Valley and all of your wonderful children, but I look forward to this new adventure that we'll have in store. As a lifelong resident and former PVMS student, Putnam Valley will always be a part of who I am. Your children were of joy to teach, and they've touched my heart greatly. I'm sad that I will be leaving your children, but have a successful rest of the school year, and your children are in good hands." Congratulations to Ms. Pat Vandeveld. Enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
All right. Now, I'd like to welcome up Dr. Podesta and Mrs. Pico.
Good evening, everyone. Jen Pico and I are here to congratulate the one and only Leslie Goldfine. So many of you in this room have known Leslie longer than I have, because she has actually been in the district for 14 years. She started as a substitute teacher, became a teaching assistant, and considers herself very fortunate to have worked in all three buildings. This year, she came to our building, and she has had her schedule changed, I don't know, 15 or 35 times, right up until today. And every time her schedule changes, because we need her talents in different places and her warm, loving care toward children, she says, "Okay, tell me where to go." And she continues to spread that warmth and love for young children. She is a ball of energy. She always has something funny to say. She doesn't know this, but I walked in the office one day and I said to the staff in the office, I said, "She is very funny. Do you listen very carefully? That woman is very funny." And you have to listen carefully, though, because sometimes she'll get it right past you. But Leslie, we know how much you will be missed in all three buildings. You're so warm. You're always so willing to help wherever you're needed. And actually, I will say that many staff members are her friends, and I walked down the halls, and they know her from years of just working together and sharing in her friendship. I know that she and her beautiful family, some of who are here today, are looking forward to having more time with Leslie, and she is looking forward also to a new home in Delaware. That might be a great place to go, right? It seems to be where the party will be, yes. So Leslie, we'll miss you. Congratulations, and thank you for coming to the elementary school. We will miss you.
You will truly be missed. I'd like to ask the Board's permission to move the first three items of new business to now, change the agenda. Is that, is that okay? Yes. So can we go to new business number one? Joe?
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent schools, Michael Soprano be granted tenure in the area of music at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1st, 2022.
Second. Questions or comments?
I just wanted to note that Michael is here with his family this evening, beautiful little kids, and his wife, who is also here, a teacher here in Putnam Valley. I've had the honor to observe Mr. Soprano on several occasions over the last couple of years, and a recent conversation I had with him earlier this year after observing him was, "I cannot believe one person can play as many instruments as Michael. It's pretty amazing." In fact, he records a song using one instrument at a time, so the other students playing that song can hear just their instrument, and then he also then lays those different instrumental tracks on top of each other and allows the entire band to hear what it sounds like with all the instruments playing the music, and each one was individually recorded by him. So I have very little talents. Music is certainly not one of them, but I was very amazed by that. So I'll throw that out there.
Michael. Come in.
You have to go first.
I'm sorry, all in favor? Aye. I knew we were going to say that. Number, number two, Ellen, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Denise Hatchkowsky be tenured in the area of English at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1st, 2022.
Second. Questions or comments?
So as many are aware, Denise has been with us for many years. We asked her to take on a new task in the recent years, and that new task required her to use a certification that she had long possessed, but not in a subject area she had recently taught. So while she continues to be a teacher here for many years, we do want to recognize that she is in fact earning tenure in a second subject area. So, thank you.
All those in favor? Aye. Congratulations. And number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that Sasha Babala be granted tenure in the area of special education at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective September 1st, 2022.
Second. Questions or comments?
So Sasha is accompanied here this evening with her husband. I started an ongoing debate as to who's taking who out for dinner, so they'll have to let me know who wins. But I actually had the privilege of observing Sasha just last week, I believe, and I was amazed by the culture for learning she's created in her classroom. I've never heard so many students compliment each other, encourage each other, correct each other. She designed a very engaging lesson, and the students were definitely actively learning for the entire time I was there. So I was very much impressed, and I wholeheartedly recommend her for your consideration for tenure.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Congratulations. This way you guys can take some pictures and then go home.
I was going to say, that's code for you could all leave. But I want you to stay.
Sure. Sought the recommendation of superintendent schools to approve the consent agenda items two through seven as presented to the Board at this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments?
Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of health and welfare contracts with Katona, Lakeland, and White Plains, acceptance of CSE/CPSE placements, approve some workdays for staff members without pay. We're amending a coaching stipend tonight, approval of an updated 2122 substitute listing, and we're approving PPS contracts for classified students, which include two transportation contracts and one educational services contract.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. So we're going to go into presentations. The first presentation is...
Do you want me to introduce you as the first presenter?
Do you want me to introduce you as the first presenter?
Sure.
Okay. The first presentation this evening will be provided by Ms. Barbara Parmley. Thank you.
Okay, we are, there are two candidates for two open seats on the BOSI's Board, the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's Board. There are only two people running. I had their names and I've lost them now. One is Tina McKay.
Frank Schnecker.
And Frank Schnecker, both of whom are on there now and are running again. It's really nice that Tina runs because she keeps Putnam Valley in the loop, because she served on this board years ago and now is a trustee at BOSI's. And Frank is very active through the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. So there are two candidates for two open seats. And we're going to vote later, right?
Yep.
Okay.
That was a great presentation.
All right. So our second presentation this evening will be Ms. Figarella and myself. We're going to spare everyone a third run through of the presentation that remains remarkably similar. So instead, we decided to try to go into more of a Q and A type session, but the presentation is up there. So if anything, question sparks a slide of interest, we can certainly jump to it. But we figured we can sort of collect questions or answer any questions the board may have, and I think we have some maybe ourselves, and we'll go about in that format. And then obviously, the community members will have the opportunity to ask questions as well.
Okay. I guess I'd like to start with the priorities, like how this budget, like what was the most, what were the important things that you were trying to do and that we, I feel that you've done in this budget?
I think from a programmatic standpoint, it's always our hope to continue the programs that we believe are being beneficial to our students. And those programs extend beyond the core academic day. They include our extracurricular activities, they include the clinical support we're providing our students. Really, all the opportunities we provide the students of Putnam Valley to grow and learn here in our schools. And this budget, we think we were successful in being able to continue all of those programs and provide our students with a well-rounded and rigorous education.
So just to add to that, you know, I think proposing a responsible budget, you know, within our tax cap is one of my priorities and all of our priorities, but as far as, you know, aside from the academics. And finding ways to repurpose any savings that we have so we don't have to impose new taxes on taxpayers, or, you know, using the budget to fund capital projects in order to save on bonding projects in the future. I think those are some of the things that were my priority during this budget when we started to develop it.
Jill, the district has reserves, and how do they play a role in this year's budget?
Okay.
And can you talk about how much reserves that we do have?
Sure. Right now, the district has, as of the last audited report, about $12 million in reserves within the general operating budget. Some of those are restricted reserves, and about 4% of it is unrestricted, which means it can be used for multiple purposes. The restricted reserves are more or less restricted to the things that they are earmarked for. Some of them have to be voted on by the board to be moved, or they have to be voted on by the public, such as the capital reserve, repair reserve. There's a few of them that have to go back out to the public vote. As far as how we use the reserves in the budget this year, we have $1 million of our debt service reserve, which is not part of the general operating budget. It's a separate reserve. Going towards the roof project at the high school, it's going to really be our first phase of doing the roof repair at the high school. The roof repair is a much more expensive thing to repair. It's about $3.5 million, and it's something we're going to have to do over time. And by doing it in phases like that, too, it will not recur all at once either. So I think that that is the wise way to go with that. Is another $1.1 million of reserves being brought into the budget. So it's not to pass it back to the taxpayer, it's to, you know, supplement our revenues that we're getting, because we're just simply not getting enough to make those ends meet and to keep the programs and the staff that we'd like to be able to sustain. So we're bringing those back into the budget to help us balance everything out.
So along in that, with that, when something comes up during the year that was not budgeted, how does the district decide how it will pay for it within the constraints of the budget?
Well, again, we would probably look for, you know, efficiencies wherever we could. If we knew we, you know, maybe overanticipated something that we were, you know, budgeting maybe special ed needs or something like that, because we do, you know, put an appropriated fund balance in the budget so that we can address things as they come up. So that's what the reserves are for as well. If we had to use reserves to cover something like that, we would. Or if we can pull from an area of the budget where we felt was more efficient, we would do that.
Thank you.
Now that the state budget has passed, yes? So we know, so our figures now are not preliminary there of what we're getting from the state. You have a clearer picture of exactly what we're getting. Is it pretty much what you've budgeted? It's like, are we, where we're supposed to be, or?
Yep. We're pretty much getting what they told us we were going to get. There was a slight change in some of our expense-driven aids, which really don't have an impact on what we're able to use to fund the budget. It's more or less aid created by what we spent in the current school year. So those can fluctuate, and they can still fluctuate when they come to us next year for payments. But the building aid itself is part of the tax cap. That was one of them that fluctuated, and it isn't going to make a difference to what we, what we put into the budget already. So yes, it stayed pretty much the same.
So just another note related to the foundation aid that we've received. I think it's been well-publicized that New York State has made a commitment to fully funding the foundation aid, and that has led to increased amounts to districts who were underserved or underbudgeted in previous years. And we were one of those districts and received additional monies through state aid. But I want to note that with those additional monies, we were able to offset expenses that would have otherwise been, had a very dramatic impact on our budget. So that we were able to, obviously, we hear a lot about inflation. The last I heard is inflation is over 8.5%. So that obviously means it's costing the district more to do business, it's costing our vendors more to do business, it's costing us more to buy supplies, materials, equipment. So that increased state aid provides us some flexibility to allow that to continue to happen. Also, we've seen significant increases in our healthcare contributions. And again, that's allowed us to offset the expenditures related to increases, at least $400,000 increase in health insurance alone. So while, yes, we received additional funds from New York State, we also are seeing some significant increases on our expenditure side, many items which are out of our control. So it's helped offset those. And without the additional state aid, we'd be having very different conversations this go-around regarding our budget.
So Jill, I know I ask this every meeting, because I wanted to make sure that people are aware of this. Can the federal stimulus funds be used to lower the tax levy?
No. The federal stimulus funds only can bring revenue to the district for items such as learning loss or for health and safety reasons. And, you know, it can't be used to bring in as revenue to the general operating budget to reduce the tax levy in another, you know, or to account for revenue in another way.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's very clear to anyone that can hear it. So what happens to the staff and programs that are put in place once the federal stimulus funds are depleted or expire in two years?
So, and as we've presented on several occasions, the district has to be willing to reevaluate those positions and walk away from ones that we do not think are essential. At the end of the day, the amount of money, because of the tax cap, the amount of money that the district can levy is already determined, right, or will already be determined, whether we keep those positions or not. So if the decision is made that these positions are essential and they must be kept, that would mean we have to cut other expenditures within the budget to offset where those expenses are. So any positions, obviously, we don't know what's going to happen with enrollment over the next couple of years. But certainly, those positions that are being bought in with federal stimulus funds would have to be scrutinized before the decision was made whether or not to keep them. And there has to be a willingness for us to walk away from things that are nice to have, but maybe not must-haves. And if it's determined that they are in fact must-haves, that means they have to come in place of something else, right? So we have to offset that expenditure with a saving somewhere else, because the tax cap is still the tax cap, and we would simply be unable to bring on those expenses without having, without exceeding the cap that's put in place from New York State.
So from the NISBA session that I attended on budgeting, on the budget result, they were talking about the foundation aid, and it's essentially a two-step, two-year process. So next year will be the last year, in theory, of the bump up and to fill whatever gap. And do we anticipate, because in that, in that seminar, there were some schools that were not going to get those gaps filled. Are we one of those school districts, or are we on target to, to fill that, that anticipated gap?
We anticipate seeing another increase. We don't necessarily anticipate it being the same as we received this year, but we do anticipate there being another increase for us to be considered fully funded. Some districts are overfunded, and they receive minimum state aid amount. I think this year was 3%. I think every district got 3%, whether they were under or overfunded. But we qualify as a district that's been underfunded, and this year, we did not reach full funding, right? So we would expect there to be a second installment next year, which we then anticipate would make us fully funded.
And we accommodated for, or accounted for that in 2011 through 13, when they started pulling back after the recession, as far as when they, they told us what we were supposed to get and not give it to us. And so we had to budget based on that and made changes to program now eight, 10 years ago, I guess.
It really started in 2006, the original formula, and they have never fully funded the formula. So we've always had to not count on getting that, because it never seems to get past the legislator. So we can't, the only, the only aid that they ever replaced for the years that, the last six or seven, was that gap elimination aid, which was a totally different formulated aid.
Gotcha.
But once we're up to full formula, we will get full formula every year, supposedly.
Promises, promises, yeah.
In theory. That's the theory.
In theory.
But that wouldn't be any dramatic increases anymore.
Right.
That would be...
No, they're going to level off, we're going to see typical, I don't really know. I mean, our typical change in aid is anywhere from $2,000 to $300,000, but it is all based on, you know, attendance, enrollment, this and that. So there's many, you know, wealth factors involved in it, and it can be adjusted. So there's no guarantees.
Jill, how does the tax cap formula accommodate inflation?
So it, it really doesn't. It's, right now, the allowance that they've, in the formula is 2%, and that's only part of the formula. So it's not even like, you know, you can count on an additional 2%. It's 2% of a tax levy that's already, you know, it's adjusted by a growth factor. So the inflation this year that we're, that we were seeing when we started to develop the budget was about 4.5%. It's probably going to be up and around 8.5% by the time we get to vote on the budget. So none of those additional planned percentage, I mean, percentage points have been planned into the budget since we started to develop it. We left it where we could with the 2% increase, and we haven't really accounted for those other increases. We've had, we're going to have to dip into our reserves. And luckily, again, as we spoke about the aid, it's helping us pay for some of that.
So at a couple of the Q and As that you had with the public, there was talk about student enrollment decreasing, but budgets increasing, and, you know, questions about that. So I'd like you to clarify how that works.
Sure. So regarding student enrollment, there's two main variables that we look at for a school district. The first is sort of the number of students exiting 12th grade versus the number of incoming kindergarten students. And that's something that we've seen a decrease in, right? We've been graduating larger classes than we've been bringing in, and that's resulted in a decrease in overall number of students in our schools. The good news is, is this graduating class this year was really the last of what I would call the larger classes. So that attrition rate will really start to drop off in future years. We won't see such a drastic decrease. I think next year, we're projecting about a 40-student decrease between the graduating class and the incoming class. The other variable that we look at is the number of students that are withdrawing from our school versus the number of students that are enrolling. Now, this happens across all 13 grade levels, right? We received students last week that enrolled into school for the remainder of the school year. So this is something that's, a number that's constantly in flux. But one of the big changes we've noticed over the last several years is that number has typically been static. We lose 60 kids, we gain 60 kids. We lose 90 kids, we gain 90 kids. It has never really had an impact on our enrollment, but as we've shared several times at the board table, in the last two and a half years now, we've seen a drastic increase in enrollments versus withdrawals. So we are up to over 165 new students entering the district, then students leaving the district. So our delta is introducing. So we're losing 40, but we've gained 100, well, we've lost 40 this year. Over the last two and a half years, we've gained 165 students. So if that trend continues, then it will certainly see a leveling off even faster. If that trend reverts back to sort of a wash, we still anticipate our enrollment leveling off drastically in the next few years, because the size of the graduating classes is comparable to the size of the incoming students, classes.
Jill, one question that always came up at one of the library meetings is the long-term implications of a zero tax, 0% tax levy. Can you go over that for us, please?
So, well, the long-term effects would be reducing, you know, a reduction in programs and staff. And once we start reducing our reserves because of no tax levy increase, that can, it can really reduce at a rapid rate. Our, if a 0% tax levy were imposed right now, we'd lose about $600,000. That will continue to compound annually as we go forward, because whatever, we don't get to put up for a levy this year, let's say, will continue to come off of the following year, because we have to start with the prior year's tax levy when we start the calculation. And so although it may not have been there to start with, we're still losing out on our ability to have that money in reserves so that we could, we can use it when we need it. And once we start to rapidly reduce the reserves, it becomes, it becomes dangerous. And we don't have the type of reserves where we can, we can say, you know, we have so much in reserves that we can just, you know, but pay it down, pay it down to eat up some of the expenditures that we have. If we start doing that, it's, it's going to be depleted very rapidly. So it's not a healthy way to move forward by imposing a 0% tax levy, unless there were some anomaly where we got some great amount of state aid or some other source of funding that we weren't expecting.
All right. So I think not only does it create that initial hole, but the following year, you start in that hole, and then you're applying your percentage to a lower number, right? So the number is 600,000 less than it would have otherwise been. Regardless of what the tax levy cap is the future, the following year, it's, you apply that percentage to a lower number, right? So then you're losing even more money. And then the following year, you're starting with an even lower number than you would have, and you're applying your percentage to it, which is going to result in an even lower number. So that's sort of the compounding effect that it would have by having a 0% tax levy, is it just creates a hole, and the hole gradually grows deeper and deeper and deeper. And to Jill's point, the only way to offset that hole is to use the reserves. But we know that the reserves will quickly be exhausted as that hole grows deeper. And that's certainly the scenario we're trying to avoid.
So, and we have been using our reserves. In 1617, I think our fund balance was about 16.5 million dollars. It's, it's about 12.4 right now. I mean, we did have an uptick in 2021 because of the COVID, you know, time lost in school. We didn't have the same amount of expenditures in that particular school year. So we had an uptick. an uptick, but it's, it's going back the other way now because we are applying reserves to our budgets every year, so.
And we've had a lot of questions about, well, we could use more of the reserves, but we're, our reserves are unrestricted is only 4% of the budget. So 4% is a very small percentage and it's what the state or, and all the auditors recommend that we have, correct?
That's correct. The 4%, right. The other reserves that we have that are assigned and restricted and not to, I don't want to lose any transparency with that. That is something that at any time, you know, some of them can be used and they can be moved around. The, the thing of it is, is that none of them are at their maximum. Like in other words, if you read into the comptroller's guidance about reserves, I mean, none of our reserves are at their maximum levels. So I want to, I want to put that out there because it isn't that some of them can't be moved or a, a type of reserve can't be reduced if needed be, if need be that we needed to dip in to use it for an emergency or for some purpose. But they're not at an ideal level to begin with. So it's not something we want, we want to do just to show that we're using reserves. If we have a remaining amount of appropriations from a budget in any particular year and we feel that that amount, we don't need to add to our reserve and we can put it towards next year's budget, then that's something we can, you know, we should talk about and decide whether that's the financial decision that we want to make that year, you know? I don't think that we're anywhere near maximum as far as those restricted reserves go.
And those restricted reserves are there for a reason, you know, for, for tax or share rates, for all kinds of other reasons. They're budgeted because there's a possible anticipation of needing to use them for that purpose.
Right. Some of the pension reserves, for instance, you know, we see a lot of fluctuation in the interest rates that the state is, you know, earning on those monies that they have invested. And so then that comes back to us in, in a, in a budget where we may not expect the, the cost for the pension contributions that the district have to make. They fluctuate quite a bit sometimes. I have one, we have one pension retirement contribution for the, for the one unit going up about 400,000 and the other one coming down about four. So there's such a, it's such a volatile contribution rate scheduled that they, that, you know, it's not consistent. It's not consistent. So we, we have to be careful and we may need those reserves to make up some of that at some point, so.
So Jill, if the budget goes down, I don't like the word fail, if it goes down, well, decisions will have to be made and what would that look like for the district?
Right. So there's, there's a couple of different scenarios. The first one being that, you know, the board can decide to put the, the same budget back up again. They can decide to move things around, change it, reduce it, and put it back up again. And if it should fail a, a second time on either one of those scenarios, then they would be forced to do a contingent budget. And a contingent budget means exactly what we were just talking about, reverting back to a prior year's tax levy and so forth. So being that we just had that conversation about what would happen if it went to zero, that's what would happen. It would decimate programs and staff in, in that next particular year for sure because, you know, you would automatically have to make cuts of $600,000. And there are other items in the budget too that we would no longer be able to support because there's guidance for certain things that you have to remove. Another one would be community use of buildings would definitely have to be collected charges for those that we may not really cover right now. We only, we charge a certain fee for use, but not really covering all of our expenses. And we couldn't do that if that were to fail, so.
I mean, a contingent budget would actually be worse than a 0% budget because of all the other restrictions-
There's other things that could be removed in addition. That's correct. Yes.
That then change the following, so the following year then would be stuck again at zero.
Right.
And we, and would have to then make those decisions all over again as to what the next step is. But we'd be in a situation where we'd probably have to use some reserves to make up shortfalls because we had to put down-
From the year before, right.
Last, the last library meeting, there was a question regarding BOSI's aid-
Okay.
And how it was generated. And does the BOSI's receive New York State funds or funds from the federal government?
So, so they don't. They don't receive money from New York State. They do apply for, I did find out more about it because I wasn't too sure myself when we were in that meeting. The federal stimul, uh, the federal funds, they do apply for some federal funds, but it's specifically for special aid grants and they use them for special ed education purposes. They, the only monies they use to operate are based on what they call COSRs and those are cooperative services that all the districts, you know, use. And our BOSI's has 18, I think it's 18, 18 component districts that purchase those services and that's how they're funded, through those services. They are allowed to pass back administrative costs to districts and, and so forth. And we can talk about that more when I know we're going to adopt the BOSI's budget tonight or vote on adopting it. So we can talk more about it then. But any of the money that they use to operate, they get from the component districts.
So just to clarify, because I was also not entirely sure on that answer when the question was asked last week, they do not receive any discretionary state aid funds like foundation aid like school districts do?
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Does the public, there are only a few of you here, have any questions or comments about the budget before we move on?
1.49, correct?
1.49 is the tax levy change. So the budget to budget is, is different than the tax levy change. The tax levy change is 1.49%. I don't know, Dr. Left, if you want to go over the five facts that we like to make sure we mention for you.
Sure. So I don't have them in front of me, so I have to go off the top of my head.
I can put them up on the screen.
Oh, you can put it on. Sure. So I know we've discussed numerous occasions, really the districts drive to get greater voter turnout to make sure that as many members of the community that are interested are provided with accurate information to make an informed decision when the budget vote comes around on May 17. So the big piece or discouraging piece for me is when you review the previous year's voting rolls and 9.1% of all eligible voters in our town came out and cast a vote regarding the school budget last school year. And of those, a subset of those represent about 15% of parents of school-aged children cast a vote regarding the budget that would obviously directly impact their child's education. But there's some good news. I think we've, it's, it's positive news that the district has remained below the tax levy cap since its inception and continue to do so this year. We think that despite all of the external variables that are outside of our control, like healthcare contributions, pension contributions, and obviously inflation, we're very proud of the fact that we're able to propose a 1.49% tax levy increase to our community. That increase equates to approximately $138 a year or 38 cents a day. And most importantly, that we're able to maintain all of our programs as discussed earlier with that 1.49%. And it's just important to also note that our tax cap, I mean, tax rate remains below what it was nine years ago. So the amount of dollars collected in taxes nine years ago was greater than what it is now, based upon obviously the average assessed home value.
Jill, did you, can we revisit, I mean, we don't talk about it anymore because it's kind of built into the cake that we don't even see it. STAR exemptions-
Sure.
And a few years ago, we added veterans exemption for parts of school taxes. If just kind of the, the, you know, when we're talking about budget, we are always looking and thinking about the community at large when we're coming up, when budgets are being developed, which is the main reason, one of the main reasons why we are using reserves and staying within the tax cap. But, you know, STAR's gone through a number of changes in the last five years. It used to be automatic or it came out differently and now, could you just go through that a little bit?
Right. And I have to tell you, there are a lot of different scenarios. So I, I did put back on the table back there, a flyer regarding STAR. So I know there's not a lot of people here, so they're not going to be able to grab it. But we will, we keep updating our information on the website. We'll have to update again. I don't think there's really anything too new, but just to review, we have, there's many different types of exemptions. If you want to apply for an exemption, it's, you have to go through the assessor's office in the town hall. Even though the STAR affects your school taxes, it's one of the ones that does, it still gets applied for online. There are some that can be applied, the veterans exemption, for instance, goes through the town. So there's different, different rules for different types of exemptions. The best way to find out the most about them is to contact the assessor in the town and they have the most information on all of these. Information can be found on the STAR website. Right now, we have, the biggest exemptions that we see coming through are the, what they call the aged all exemption. That's not part of STAR. It's for, it's for anybody over 65, but it is income-based and it's a sliding scale. I believe it starts around, I'm going to make this up because I'm not sure exact number, but around 40,000 and goes up to like 75,000. And there's a sliding scale. It goes from 5% to 50% reduction in your, in your assessed value and then, you know, reduces your taxes that way. But the STAR is different. The STAR gets reimbursed to the district from the state. So it comes through aid. It does not affect other people's taxes. So where some of these exemptions might push the assessed values off to other properties, the STAR does not. So right now, we have 381 enhanced STAR exemptions. It's about $2,750 for an enhanced exemption. You have to be of the right age. You have to have the right income. There's different levels and there's different rules. If you just purchased, you'll get a credit on your, on your bill. If you've been in the district since I think it's 2015, you'll, and you were always getting a credit on your bill, you'll get the credit on your bill. If you're just purchasing though, after a certain date, they only give you that money back after you've paid it. So it's, it's not something you see on your bill. You have to pay it first and then, and wait for the state. The state's been trying to refund that money prior to paying your tax bill. So hopefully they will continue to do that so that people don't have to pay it out first and then get it back. The basic exemption is the lower one. Everyone's entitled to that unless they make over $500,000. And that exemption is about $1,200. We have four, did I say how many? We have 1,408 people who really base it. The veterans exemption, we have two different types. They're both different levels of, of-
Service.
Of savings, right? And there's 140 people, 140 veterans in Putnam Valley who take advantage of that. And overall, we have 4,700 taxpayers in the valley. So I'm sure there's people that, believe it or not, are still not applying for STAR. It's been in effect since 1995. So it's something that if you, if you're hearing about it for the first time, that you should definitely look into.
Yeah, I'm working on it now. I bring it up because I'm working on it now for my parents-
Oh.
Who are in Lakeland and because they're in Westchester, the deadline is May 1st. So I'm actually working on the documents for them now.
So our deadline has passed in Putnam County. It was March 1st. And then I was going to say that it has to be a primary residence too. So if it happens to be, I know we have a lot of both in the valley, so it does have to be a primary residence.
Now, these are not necessarily mutually exclusive, correct? Enhanced STAR and basic STAR, they could be including those same people? 381 or within 14?
No, you can't have both. You can't-
So you don't get both?
No. No, but if you were over 65 and you couldn't, and you were not entitled to enhance because your income is whatever it is, or you have years where it fluctuates, you would be bumped back to basic.
Gotcha.
And Maureen, May 17th, want to give us the budget date details as well as the absentee voting and-
Absentee ballots are available now, but it's a two-step process. The application to get an absentee ballot is already on the website. People can just download it, print it out, send, mail it in to me or bring it in to me and I will give them an absentee ballot. One of the reasons for using an absentee ballot is still allowable for COVID, being afraid to come to the voting polls. You would check off temporary illness on the application and that covers you for that. The vote itself will be held at the elementary school on May 17th, Tuesday, from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And we encourage people who are, may not be registered to register to vote. There's also a link on the website for that with information where you can check if you're registered or not. And if you aren't, you can fill out a form and send it in. Everyone must be registered by May 12th to be able to vote in this election. If anybody has any questions, they can feel free to call me in the district office. The number there is 845-528-8143. My extension is 1367. And all this information is on the website. No one should hesitate to call me.
Thank you.
Okay.
The budget, the budget presentations and all of that is also on the website. The lung version of the budget is on the website. And I would encourage people who have questions about anything that they're concerned about to call me Monday through Friday. I'm in the office. If I'm not there, I will get back to you. And my contact information is on the website as well.
And the budget mailing is going out?
The budget newsletter is going out, I believe, has to be in the mail by May 6. Has to be in the mail by May 6. It will be. And we're working on it now. And now that the budget's been adopted by the board, we can move forward with that. So it's in progress. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to go back to new business. And I think we're on number four.
Number four. Resolving recommendations to obtain the schools to accept the resignation of teaching assistant, Irma Linda Pregiotto from the district effective June 30th, 2022, as per document number 17422 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Whereas Board of Cooperative Education Services, Putnam, Northern Westchester County, thereafter, BOSI's has proposed its tentative administrative budget for the 2022-2023 school year, July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2023. Now, therefore, be it resolved that BOSI's tentative administrative budget for the 2022-2023 school year in the amount of $10,444,000 be and hereby is approved by the board.
Second. Questions or comments?
To be clear, $10 million is not Putnam Valley's share.
It is not.
I just don't want to hear this resolution think that, that 20% of our entire budget is BOSI's. We have a worksheet here that's talking about, I guess, our proposed share is about $610,000.
So the 610 is what we pay for our CTE, for the, for the technical program, for the students who go from Putnam Valley to BOSI's to take technical programs. We do-
Jill, that, that depends on the number of students we send.
Yeah, it's actually based on the number of sessions they take, not actually the number of kids that attend.
Okay.
So it's, I believe we use like 50, out of 1,234 sessions that they run, we have 54.7 sessions, Putnam Valley does. So we take up about 4, 4.4% of their total CTE budget. The other types of expenses, obviously, that- The other types of expenses, obviously, that we have to pay for as part of our contribution toward, like earlier, I mentioned the administrative portion of their budget. We have to pay a portion of that. It's based on two things, well, a few things. One of them is what they call ORWADA, which is a weighted average daily attendance plus 50% of the true value of all of our properties. They get factored, and then they distribute that back out to the 18 districts. So, they take all those components of those 18 districts, and then they figure out what your percentage is, and that's, and then also factored into there is like the increase, like we talked about increasing health insurance in our district. Well, they have the same increase, so their administrators and all their staff experience the same increase. So, that goes back to the districts as well. And then they have a capital budget for their improvements on their campus, and we have to pay in towards that, too. Our contribution towards that is like $2,500. We have a very small portion, let's say, allocation to the budget, actually. Our administrative costs are small in comparison to other districts, but in our budget, it's about $258,000. So, overall, we spend about $4.3 million on BOSIS throughout our entire budget. And, you know, it's not much of an increase of what we were paying last year. I know that they try to keep their increases below what the tax cap is, so I think it's 1.94 opposed to 2% that we've been, you know, allowed to increase. Our BOSIS budget has gone up about $150,000 from the prior year, so not a big increase, and mostly because of services that we need to have for students, so.
So, I just wanna clarify, that number is inclusive of many things, not just the CTE program for student tuition, but services we purchase, professional development, supplies, materials, equipment. There's many different avenues in which we use our local BOSIS, and all of those tuition for special education students, all of those collectively represent the dollar figure that Jill provided formerly.
And as a corollary, then our next agenda item is about them having an equipment reserve fund. That's gonna be funded out of their unexpended dollars, or is that gonna be new dollars?
No, it's gonna be funded out of their unexpended, so whatever they charge per session for each student, it's already like, it's part of that number, so that is supposed to be going. Now, the only, they're just wanna create a reserve so that they can replace equipment such, they said their heavy programs are like welding and nursing, and so those are, those are programs that constantly need equipment replaced in them, so they factored that into the cost per session.
Right. Just to clarify, this agenda item is looking for permission from the component districts to allow them to create this reserve. This resolution has nothing to do with their ability or plans to fund that reserve, right? So, they need our permission to create it, and then it's our understanding that within their existing budgeting, that they'll be able to earmark monies to go into this reserve as opposed to being expected to replace equipment on a year-by-year basis. The reserve will allow them to accumulate monies earmarked specifically to replace some of this higher-end equipment, which obviously costs substantial amounts of money.
Okay, but that's the next resolution, correct?
That is another. I just wanna see how they're connected.
Yeah. All in, all in favor of resolution five?
Aye.
Wait, four?
Five?
Five.
Five, sorry. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number six, please.
Six, yeah. Whereas the Board of Education of the Putnam, Northern Westchester Board of Cooperative Education Services, P&amp;W BOSIS, has determined that it would be in the best interest of the P&amp;W BOSIS and its component school districts to establish a career and technical education program equipment reserve fund, CTE Equipment Reserve, the purpose of which is to support the replacement and purchase of advanced technology equipment used in the career and technical education instructional programs conducted by the P&amp;W BOSIS as provided in Education Law Section 19504EE and Section 170.3K of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education. And whereas the law requires the approval for creation of the CTE Equipment Reserve by a majority of the Boards of Education of the P&amp;W BOSIS Component School Districts, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Putnam Valley Central School District hereby approves establishment of a career and technical education equipment reserve fund at P&amp;W BOSIS in accordance with the requirement of Education Law Section 19504EE and Section 170.3K of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education, and be it further resolved that the resolution shall take effect immediately, and the district clerk is directed to transmit a certified copy of this resolution to the P&amp;W BOSIS District Superintendent.
Second.
Questions or comments? And how will we know whether they got the number of people voting to accept? Like, will they notify us?
They'll notify us.
Sure.
I have to send the results in the morning, then they'll notify us later.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The resolution passes. Number seven, please.
Resolved to cast one vote each for two candidates for two vacancies on the Board of Cooperative Education Services of Putnam, Northern Westchester Counties, whose names are marked with a X on the ballot attached as document number 17222, the official minutes of this meeting, each term running July 1st, 2022 through June 30, 2025. One, Tina McKay. Two, Frank Schnecker.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number eight, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Shannon Vita-Lee as a six-week long-term substitute general education teacher at the elementary school, effective on or about May 12th of 2022 through June 24th of 2022, or sooner at the discretion of the Board of Education. At the rate of $140 per day, Ms. Vita-Lee holds a childhood education 1 through 6 initial certification.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number nine, please.
Resolved that the Board of Education of the Putnam Valley Central School District approve a property tax report card for the 2022-23 school year, referenced in the minutes of this meeting as document number 17722, and authorize the district treasurer to submit it to the State Education Department.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Okay, reports. We are missing our students again. Did they send a report? Are we, no?
Yeah.
Okay. I know they're so busy, this is such a busy time. Dr. Luft, how about you?
Sure. Well, I mean...
You're not busy?
No. Man. It was actually very quiet around here last week during spring break, so there is not a whole lot to report out on since our last meeting. Exciting news that our Magma program will be beginning again next week, so it's an exciting program, where we can walk forward to welcoming our students back. Our final budget hearing business meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 3rd, so a little PSA, another Tuesday meeting, May 3rd, another of our final budget meeting, and obviously there's been several reminders this evening regarding the vote on May 17, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Putnam Valley Elementary School. And as noted in my update that went out this evening for the newsletter, there are a tremendous number of events. I actually counted them up on my paper. There are 24 separate events occurring between now and the end of the school year in which we are welcoming parents, students, families back into our buildings, and really, many of those are highlighting the talents of our students, whether athletically, academically, or through the arts. There are plenty of opportunities for individuals to get out and to see some of the amazing students we have here in Putnam Valley in action. So, I will spare the reading of all 24, but I'll just give a quick glimpse of the next two weeks. So, our middle school musical, our middle school production of the High School Musical is scheduled for Friday and Saturday this week, 7:00 p.m. Next weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, is Theater Works, the high school production of In the Heights. Then we have May 4th, National Honor Society induction, 7:00 p.m. in the pack. May 5th, our third-grade recorder concert, 7:00 p.m. And May 6th is our middle school talent show. So, I think that's two Fridays from now, from next Friday, and we'll have another meeting before then, and then I'll continue down my list of 24 events. But that's all for this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, my calendar is looking like, like every box says something.
Every day.
Right. Will Magma be on Sunday?
So, it's gonna start this season, we're gonna do it on Tuesday evenings, and it starts next Tuesday. We're gonna do three sessions, just sort of getting back into it, getting people together, having our high school students train and be prepared for, for the students that they'll work with, and then we hope to be back in full swing next year. But I think a lot of the feedback that we got was that if we could do it during the week, so that families could have their weekends, or at least their Sundays, that they preferred that, but we'll say, we'll certainly survey our parents. And it's a, it's a great program. People have really been asking a lot about it, and just for those who don't know what Magma is, it's a program that we started where our high school students coach and work with some of our students with disabilities, who have more physical disabilities, or might be on the autism spectrum, all different types of disabilities, and it's just a fantastic program, and parents are...
With soccer, right?
It's all different kinds of sports activities. It's really about sports skills, sportsmanship, communication, just lots of different areas of growth for our students. So, so we're starting this Tuesday, and our high school students are really excited. There's usually, you know, 25 students to every one elementary student, you know, so it's always nice to see, and everybody's excited, so.
So, we're hoping it doesn't snow.
Hoping it does not snow next week.
It's a little scary.
And, but luckily, we can always be inside, so, which is a good thing.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to invite the public to comment on any topic, not just the agenda items. Does anybody have anything they'd like to...
I found this evening very poignant.
Your name?
I worked with Ms. Cobb.
Sorry, Sam, you have to pretend that people don't know who you are and introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry, Sam Olivirio, Putnam Valley. Over the course of my tenure here at the school, the individuals who are retiring, boy, they had such a huge impact on the student body and the staff, and they'll be sorely missed. I was especially shocked to see that Kelly was leaving. So, I kinda started with Kelly here at the high school, and I had forgotten that she came to us with previous experience, and that's where her ability to now retire kind of came about. But it's, it always amazes me how the wheel turns for our district, and you think back and all the individuals that have come and gone, you know, it's, it's very poignant. Secondly, I think this board has done a tremendous job on this budget. In the era of 8.5% to 9% inflation, which we're going through right now, and it's only gonna increase unless the Federal Reserve starts to get their butt in gear and start trying to lower that phenomenal number, to come in at 1.49% is just an amazing feat, and I compliment each and every one of you on the board and the administration. It's a task that is tremendously difficult. I know from being supervisor at the town. So, kudos to all of you. 1.49 in an era of 9% inflation is just amazing. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. And to me, our work, Jill and Jeremy's work, is not, it, I don't wanna say it's not as important, but we need the community to show that they support this budget, because it's not just their work, it's, it's all of our work. And, and so the best way to say good job is to come out and vote. I'm not saying how to vote, just to vote. Make sure your opinion is registered. Okay, anybody else? Upcoming meetings?
So, we have upcoming, we have a CTE presentation from BOSIS. I believe that's scheduled for the next meeting. I'm looking at Jackie, but she's not looking back at me. CTE is the next meeting? May 3rd?
Yes.
Okay. And then, follow-up, we are planning our ENL and our SEL presentations coming up in NMA and beginning of June, those last two, and we're still working on the Seal of Civic Readiness, because we're in the midst of that right now, so we wanna be able to talk about the process, but it's hard to talk about it when you're in the middle of it, so that will be upcoming as well.
Good. Board member comments?
I just...
I attended a BOSIS meeting today for Barbara, and one of the main concerns, or the, yeah, concerns that are coming up that was in the state budget is electric buses, and the cost to the districts on electric buses, that will be occurring over the next 20 years, whatever. So, it was scary to hear the, the impact. You know, I'm not against the electric buses, but what it's going to mean to each of the districts in New York State is going to have a huge impact.
Right.
Yeah, I know I had written something, a statement about this to the paper recently, but while we have a longstanding tradition of sustainability, including geothermal wells that heat and cool this entire campus, we are certainly in support of electric school buses. What we cannot be in support of is electric school buses that cost three times the cost of a gas or diesel school bus, because we could not sustain that, we couldn't sustain our contract with our vendor if they were forced to invest that into. So, we are certainly hopeful that rebates or other incentives will be put in place that will allow school districts to move in that direction, which we fully support, but in a way that is financially sustainable for school districts and their taxpayers.
So, with the rebates, either federal or state, do we think that that rebate is going to be to school districts only, which would leave the contractors all of this and kind of drive school districts to buy their own buses? Or do we think there'll be some sort of pass-through credit in order to subsidize vendors of school buses?
Yeah, and this is nothing more than my opinion, but there are so many districts that rely on outside contractors. I think they would be forced to allow a sense of a pass-through voucher rebate or something to allow those vendors to update their fleets to accommodate the school's needs in a way that doesn't bankrupt them or the school district through the increased contract costs to, to make up the difference of those buses. So, I would certainly hope that there would be outside contractors would be afforded the same ability to update their fleets in accordance with stated guidance.
Well, and I don't know, Jeanette, how it was, but any of the conversations that I've had with West Point about the busing or the advocacy committee, it's, even if they say, we'll give you a rebate for the next three years, we're gonna give you rebates or four years or five years, but, but what about replacement of those buses, which is still gonna be a tremendous cost? And then there's the, who's gonna work on these buses? Are there enough people trained to be able to maintain these buses once they're in your fleet? There aren't that many people that have those qualifications currently. You know, so it's, it's a multi-pronged, multi, it's like a domino thing.
Think of all the charging stations in our parking lot.
Right.
Right.
I mean, that's an amazing amount of electricity needed to power 27 buses, and we're a small district.
Right.
So, but hopefully, I mean, it does seem like, although it was a great idea and people kinda jumped on it, there's kind of been like, whoa, well, let's, let's look at long-term effects and ongoing...
I wanna say the depreciation, depreciate, the years, they were talking like 12 or 17 years, and we know that buses get turnover before 12 years, especially electric buses, so. And we know that buses get turnover per four, twelve years, especially electric bus, so.
And our, and our contract has age built into how old the buses can be anyway.
Right, right, for sure. I do, related to the same topic, I do want to say that we are sort of preemptively exploring what does make sense for us as a school district. So I know Mr. Spittle has been looking into grants and aided programs in order to start bringing in charging stations for our own, our own buses. So we mostly have the smaller school buses. We're looking at, for us, replacement costs may mean replacing a small van with a hybrid caravan. So that's something that we know financially, you're not seeing the same difference in cost as you would for a school bus. All right? So we're looking for common sense, fiscally responsible ways to start building out that infrastructure, to start replacing our own inventory of vehicles with, in kind, but with hybrid or electric vehicles that don't carry the same price tag that a full-size school bus does. We, we have very few full-size school buses. Most of the large buses, we contract through an outside vendor.
I did see that Volkswagen came out with their lovely electric bus at the New York Auto. Beautiful.
How many kids could we fit?
Three.
Okay. Any other topics? Anything else we want to talk about? Okay. I'd like a resolution to convene and anticipate an executive session for two matters of the employment history of two particular persons.
So moved?
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay. Then, good evening. What?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Night, thank you.